My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our school committee meeting of January 3rd, 2019, also known as ladies edition night. Mr. McDevitt is home with pneumonia. Feel better, Mr. McDevitt? And Mr. Tracy had a scheduling conflict. I'd like to remind you that this meeting's being recorded, so please silence your devices. And is there any public comment?
Hi, guys. Jennifer Goldman, 28, your place. I know the rules, three minutes and I don't expect a response. So, I'm gonna keep this brief. Based on your discussion last time about the surveys, I would love it if you would revisit the strategy for getting the student feedback. I did a very tiny survey of students' emailboxes, discussion with the parents, and the middle schoolers that I talked to did not receive the survey. And I know, I think you got 15 or 18 responses. And I know you're gonna do focus groups, but again, I'd love that revisited with the thought of re emailing all the middle and high schoolers and getting a survey results that are enough that you have good data to make improvement decisions on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing those students report tonight, if they come late, we'll just jump in. We'll move to the consent agenda and the approval of minutes.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented in the packet? Second.
I do have discussion, though, because there is a mistake.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Mabley, second by Ms. Picard.
Under executive session, it says the vote was 5-0. Ms. Lynch, Mabley, Picard, McDevitt, need to add Mr. Tracy. I know it's not a big deal, but, there you go.
Okay. You checking to see if he was there?
Because it says 5-0, so I was guessing he wouldn't be there.
So, if that was from...
This was the 20th of December.
Last meeting.
Yep.
Any other changes?
Oh, we do, I'm sorry. Yes!
I vote yes.
And yes, 3-0.
It's a little disorienting to not have all the characters here.
That's true.
We can write the audience up if you want.
We have some characters in the audience, too.
All right, time for the superintendent's report. I'm thinking Lorraine should give it tonight and replace you and make it an all-female.
Lorraine, in fact, Happy New Year, and I was wondering if you could just give an update of what's happening these first couple of weeks as we're back? If you could talk a little bit about your equity team?
Oh, okay. So, surprise. In the fall, the curriculum team, so that would be myself, the two curriculum coordinators and our coaches, as well as the head of nursing, Sharvar Zach, and the head of SEL, Nikki Murphy, all went to a DESI-sponsored access and equity conference, and we formed in the district our own equity team. So, we had one meeting where we just kind of did a brain dump of all the things that we heard and things that we thought were important. I've actually been in touch with a person who spoke there who we all thought was phenomenal. I had hoped to have him come to kickoff our ed camp on January 18th, but he's speaking on the Cape, so he's not available. And then we were looking at some of our one-hour days, we looked at the day in February, but really, the way our staff schedules are and those PD times, we wouldn't get the biggest bang. Like, I really want everybody to be able to hear what he spoke about. So, I'm hoping maybe early next year, possibly even kickoff in September. And so tomorrow, our whole team is meeting and we're gonna do some reflections on our own biases and feelings about equity and access, ties in with the strategic plan around PD and education for all students. And we're gonna start some work on how we're gonna have that be our kind of our overarching umbrella as we move forward as a team, all of us, so our SEL people, our curriculum people, nursing, because we have, nursing intersects a lot with the whole mental health piece and some of the other service that we do. So, that's our equity. We are equity warriors, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
And just along those lines, I was wondering if anyone was available. Monday night, I'm taking my son for braces, and I still haven't secured permission from Lawrence Public Schools, but Lawrence on Monday night, and I'm gonna call over there tomorrow and I'm sure Cynthia Jeffers-Parris won't have an issue with it, Parrish-Jeffers, the superintendent, but they have Dr. Englander come.
Oh, I remember hearing her.
So, what I'm thinking about is, you know, they have a component going on around with social media. How can we help our children responsibly navigate social media? Let's talk about it. So, she's doing a session there, so maybe I can secure permission from Mike Fialdo, my wife, or someone over there. But I was wondering if anyone had an interest in attending, just to see how it went, and then I could be in touch or Lorraine or somebody with Dr. Englander.
So, this is different from the talk she gave here a couple of years ago?
Yeah, well...
It was more of just bullying.
Just, right.
Did you touch on social?
She did a little bit, yeah.
It could be more, and like I said, I just noticed this tweet today. This is something that they had just booked.
What time is the event?
The event...
Monday, the 7th?
It is, hold on. So, it's Monday, January 7th, 6:30 PM, at the Lawrence High School Performing Arts Center. And it's probably gonna run about, I think it's an hour. And if someone was interested, you know, from my office, I'm gonna ask tomorrow. I just came across this information tonight, as I popped home for a minute. But I'd like to see how it goes and see if it's something that maybe we want to work with Napran or somewhere else to bring back.
I'm interested and available.
Excellent.
But I'm, you know, if somebody else is interested...
I'm not available, but I'd be great if somebody was, because she was great last time.
I missed her last time, I had a conflict, so, she's very good.
Great superintendent's report, Ms. Marks.
Do you have anything else?
No, I'm just, welcome back to school, everybody. You know, I did run through the high school the other day, and some of the kids, I think, have been used to sleeping a little bit later in the morning, but everyone's back in full swing today. I think there's nothing better than a fresh start, a new year, and I'm thrilled as we head into this budget season to really continue to move our district forward. I think it was a busy fall for all of us, opening a new school, the gas, you know, and a few other things, but I'm pretty excited about the fall and I'm optimistic about some real, serious work around the strategic plan that's gonna guide us for the next few years.
All right, thank you. For the chair's report, all I have is the next meeting date. I think we'll keep it on the 17th. As of Friday, only Helen, you and I had response, had filled out.
I filled out...
Oh, you did? Okay. That was after. No, you and I were the only ones as of Friday. But I think we'll just keep it, and either I will be here or I won't.
Okay.
All right, old business, second reading of the trip to Hyannis.
So, I would move that we approve the student council trip to Hyannis as printed in the packet.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Picard, second by Ms. Mabley. Any discussion?
Looks like a popular trip every year, so.
Ms. Picard?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, 3-0. Next up is second reading of the high school baseball trip to Cooperstown.
So, I would move that we approve the high school baseball trip to Cooperstown as printed in the packet.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Picard, second by Ms. Mabley. Any discussion?
It's a great Hall of Fame.
It is.
So good for them to play there.
All right. Ms. Picard?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 3-0. Now for the big, exciting report on the budget.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Jim, if we could go to the first slide. I have a few things that I'd like to say before we get started, though, Jim. So, thank you. I'm excited about this year's budget. As you know, I've spent the last six months meeting with a wide range of stakeholders regarding areas of strengths and opportunities across our district. And the following proposed budgets, my first is superintendent of schools. It addresses some of the key issues that have been identified through my entry process, but more importantly, it remains in alignment with our existing strategic plan, which we approved last June 21st for this year. In developing this budget, I worked with a tremendous team, with the entire district leadership team, and I have to give real credit to my team here tonight. Assistant Superintendent Lorraine Marks, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Donna Straight, and Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Jim Mealy. Without them and all the work going into those meetings and the collaborating and the protocols with various folks, so, very intensive over the last seven or eight weeks, I don't think we could've come up with such great recommendations. You know, when we set the goals early in August, in those shared goals between school committee and superintendent, one of the things that I had mentioned is that I wanted to reserve the right to be able to make a recommendation if applicable to this budget, but more importantly, we'll be working this spring on the strategic plan based on not only the entry data, where I saw over 1,100 people, parents, teachers, works, but we'll be also able to, you know, present that in the long run in a multi-year process, because I think it will be multi-year, but in the short term, I think some of the information was very valuable for some of the recommendations tonight. And the critical areas that we highlighted last week in the entry plan were decreasing class size, stable and consistent leadership in the superintendency and leadership in the district, meeting the needs with a focus on particularly special education, and continuing to provide a consistent leadership curriculum. We continue working to revise and implement our strategic plan for the public schools, and this June of 19, we'll present a comprehensive, multi-year strategic plan, building upon some of the successes we've had in the past. But before I introduce our recommended budget, you know, the principals really did a remarkable job as well. I think one of the things that's hardest in budget season is thinking as a, working as a team, because, you know, I've been involved in 21 budget cycles in the public schools, and oftentimes, you can have levels where elementary is interested in elementary, middle and middle, and high school and high school. I think with Chet Jackson, our new leader for the second year at the high school, with George Gunsalves at the middle school, and the team we have at the elementary, I really do believe, we have something special in North Andover, I think they have a real perspective about the whole district and what's best overall for all of our kids, pre-K through 22. So, that's exciting. But before I introduce this recommended budget, I wanna recognize the key role that town manager Andrew Mailer plays as a strategic partner. Andrew's been extremely helpful and supportive in the development of these budget recommendations and ensuring we'll be going forward with consensus budget for the eighth consecutive year, I believe, as far back as I could find in writing, anyway. As a first-year superintendent, I value his keen insight, his creativity, his ability to collaborate, and, you know, his mentorship in some other areas have been really terrific. I look forward to a long partnership that's not only gonna benefit the town, but more specifically, our kids here in the public schools, as we prepare them to be 21st century learners. So, pretty excited about that. So, Mr. Mealy, you gave me the clicker.
I did.
Thanks.
It's on the side.
So, this presentation tonight's broken up into several categories. So, the overview, first, we talk about the strategic plan that's in place, that was approved last June. As you know, we'll be sunsetting a few areas there, adding more, and we'll be also looking to track progress this year, where we've made significant progress, what we still have to work on, and other things we may have to, you know, continue to work on, plus the budget directives of the school committee. We'll take a look at the overall financial picture for the district, proposed increases, special education, other changes in a section called "Looking Forward." So, it's no surprise to anybody about the strategic plan here in North Andover. We've had three main strategic objectives, being all students a consistent and rigorous curriculum and professional practice. And ultimately, the goal, you know, around these, to best sum it up, is ensure all students are provided equal access to an excellent education that encourages them to improve their capacity to think critically, communicate, effectively understand and manage emotions, and engage in academic risks. You know, the piece around professional practice, hiring and developing excellent teachers, you look at the data, we provide professional development collaboration to continually adapt practice to meet the needs of all students. And last, really, to continue to provide a consistent and rigorous curriculum that encourages all students to really learn to the depth and distance of their abilities and leave our schools with the skills they need to succeed, whether it's career, life, college, you know, trade, et cetera. So, as you know, we had a long talk about the school committee budget directives at the senior center on November 29th during the woodworking class. And, you know, I'm gonna get to a point here, but, you know, they slightly have been modified from ones of the past, but we talked about retaining the positions necessary to support core mission. We talked about our class size guidelines. We talked about, you know, looking into the needs at the secondary. When I say secondary, that's 6 through 12. And we also took a look at, you know, really, the work we've been doing around elementary class size. You know, I think with this proposed budget, it's going to be the eighth elementary teacher we've added to the cycle backfilling in the last two years or three years, including this cycle. And then really to align what are these budgets and how are they, what are these initiatives, proposed additions, and how are they aligned with our strategic plan? So, additionally, we talked about making sure we have the resources, the staff, and support the A B E C C in year two. You know, it was, there were some particular challenges with opening that building, you know, that we discussed in our last meeting prior to the winter recess. Continue to provide faculty with up-to-date instructional materials and recommend, you know, budgets and initiatives that are gonna improve progress of high-needs learners, special education services, and also assist with parent learning, community engagement, while containing costs. So, the overall financial picture, and this is really important to follow, because there's a little caveat with this, but the FY '19 budget was $48,751,971. The cost of level services carrying over is $50,209,370, and that's approximately 2.99% increase to keep level services. We have proposed increases of $370,000 and change, and the percent increase of that is .76. For a total budget of an increase of 3.75, which is in line with working with the town manager at $50,581,70. Now, there's an asterisk, you'll notice, next to the 2.99% increase. As we discussed at length at our last meeting, we talked about, you know, the addition late in the year last year by my predecessor in terms of special education programming, and it's, really makes a lot of sense, and programs often don't see returns in that first year. But we do know that one or two students that are placed out of district with transportation and school costs fund the program. So, to date, we haven't sent a student out of district that started on September, in September with us, but as we do know, we've had several move-ins, very expensive out-of-district placements from other communities that have moved into North Andover. So, what the asterisk represents is with the addition of those two programs, we know for sure we need the one at the middle school. That was a desperate, essential need. We also know we need to expand the one at the elementary, which we talked about, formerly known as, called Thrive, at the elementary school. So, the asterisk represents, really, and I'm thankful to the town manager, level service includes all special education programs, with the exception of a first-year SEL program at the elementary schools level, and it's one particular school. This program has not yet produced anticipated cost savings, but we believe this program will be beneficial to our students and will produce cost savings in the long run. For this reason, the town manager has agreed to fund this program at $120,000 for the FY '20 school year, while we continue to evaluate the viability of this program for inclusion in future years. And that's seriously critical, and I just, I'm gonna give Donna about 30 seconds to...
Ready?
I'm staying right on track tonight.
I noticed.
So, the only thing I wanted to add about that is, you know, the superintendent is correct that we haven't brought a student back yet to substantiate and support the $120,000 of the funds, but the piece that is important to think about is the intangible money, where we haven't sent the students out and the cost of that. So, when we're looking at programs and thinking in terms of, is this program successful? The piece that I look at and track as well is how are we maintaining those students here in the district and are we able to meet their needs? So, I sort of calculate that piece. So, it's not something we can say, look, we have this extra money, it's the intangible money. So, think about that as we, you know, progress towards looking at the overall programs and their success rates.
Are there students that you know of that we would have sent out?
Yes.
Had it not been for that program?
Yes.
So, there is a savings there?
There is a saving, but it's intangible, so that's the piece that, like, we can't say, there's that money from the student coming back, so, but it's absolutely a savings. Thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, you know, the other piece is when you have programming, say, we, you know, eliminated that program this year, and then we need it again. We also wanna have the ability to go out to schools, whether it's a collaborative like Crest or somewhere where we have a placement, and say, this kid has made so much progress, we want him back in his home district with this support, but no parent. And, you know, think about your own kids and all of you have them, is, wants to have someone start in a new program and kind of be that test case or that first round of kids, because any new program has growing pains, and doesn't matter what district you're in. So, we're pretty excited that we have the ability to keep this. So, our best thinking around what makes most sense for North Andover and for, you know, meeting the needs of our kids while being fiscally responsible and planning out a continued, multi-year approach in the strategic plan, which includes a student services plan, a five-year curriculum plan, is to really sunset some of our achievements, add new additions, and use this year as a transition year to, you know, in spirit, try to start to tackle the needs identified in a small way in the entry, as well as honor what we said our goals would be in the strategic plan that was adopted June 21st of 2018. So, I'm gonna skip over this as we go to the first piece, so I can give you a little bit more of the rationale. Simply put, you know, there are some positions that you just can't live without, and we have a high school of over 1,450 kids, and it's really important. The last several years, we've staffed the high school with 2.0 nurses, but one has been grant-funded, that grant has since run out. We knew that was gonna run out, and this has to be incorporated in the operating budget. Two nurses are definitely necessary in a school that size, so that was critical. Secondly, working to close out, close the classroom over, you know, the recommended guidelines. We're down to 15%. One of the goals, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in another slide, was to get to 7.9, which I consider somewhat of an effective zero, because when you average them out, we might be below those guidelines, but you have schools like the Kittredge School, which only has two of each, which will always present, it might be one or two over, because, you know, there's only space at this time for two classrooms of each level. So, you have to really look at it that way. And this spring, we'll take a hard look at, you know, other ways to measure that, but we're proposing three elementary teachers to provide the opportunity to continue to impact class size at the elementary. That brings up to eight in the last three budget cycles, last two including, three including this one. And it also gives us the flexibility to say, okay, you know, where can we impact class size that has that need immediately? But I also wanna have the flexibility to say, okay, we've continued to add class size, so maybe two of classroom teachers, and we have to have the flexibility to say, okay, we may need a .5 special educator, or we may need, when you add additional classrooms, you need specialists in point, you know, to cover art, music, P.E., library. So, we'll take a look at that. But the ultimate goal right now is to decrease class size with those three, but we'll be working really hard all spring studying our enrollment and looking where we are. .5 reading teacher, it allows us to provide targeted reading intervention to our elementary students. The high school teacher, so, we're looking to add a 1.0, and this really came to me out of some of my meetings, anyway, to allow us to expand some offerings, course offerings in science and math. And what I really wanna do is give the principal the flexibility based on the requests that come in. So, these examples could be, you know, last year, there was an issue with AP chemistry in terms of seats. Right now, in our science department at North Andover, the highest population of students is AP, and that's at, the AP students are at, I don't have it with me, I think they're at 25 point, almost 26. Honors is at, like, 25, and then CP's at 21.7. So, the lowest is there. Converse, opposite, in the math, we have some higher numbers in the math department. So, we need the flexibility to look, because we may need to expand some CP offerings in math, and we have so many kids that have been doing well in CP, we may wanna have more of those kids have the opportunity to take honors, and honors kids to take AP. So, that's what we're looking at with that. EL support, you know, it's no surprise, we talked about, last year's graduating class had 25 kids who were born in foreign countries, just in our senior class, and we have over 27 different languages spoke here in North Andover, and we service over 100 kids with EL support, and we need more. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute when we get to the slides. Middle school, we had a loss of funding in Title I funding by $203,000, which eliminated a program we had running at the middle school for at-risk students before and after school, with mentors and folks that helped out with a whole variety of things. The A B E C C principal moving the leadership structure there from 1.8 to 2.0 for next year, and the high school has its 10-year reaccreditation up for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which has been in existence since the 1850s. So, the increase is $370,800 and a total FTE of 5.7 people. So, as we look through this component, the 5.7 represent that, and as you look, the, really, the EL support and the others are really hourly and things that we cover that way. So, special education, a couple of real key components, and we just talked about this a bit. We need to continue to pursue opportunities to reduce out-of-district costs. A, it's not only good financially for the district, B, there's nothing more important to me than keeping north Andover kids in North Andover. There's nothing more heartbreaking to me, as a someone who's a parent, is having someone, and they need this. Some kids need this specialized schooling, but to put someone on a bus for an hour a day, each way, I want kids with their peers in the community, and if we can do that, we have to find better ways to do it. We also have to, with an ongoing assessment of what do we have now, how's it working, what do those populations look like? Jim, can you talk a little bit about the circuit breaker reimbursement?
So, just being responsible, we assume a circuit breaker reimbursement of 65%, and it hasn't been under that for a few years now, when we would anticipate it being under from the feedback we get. And so, we're using 65%, always hopeful that it'll be more than that, and if it is, we can use that as contingency for out-of-district costs.
When was the last time it was over that?
It's been over there for the last two or three years now.
By?
By a couple of percent. Yep.
You know, additionally, as part of the work of the strategic plan this spring, I'm very excited, because we'll have some working groups. We have to look at everything, district-wide review of teaching and teaching assistance and our staffing needs, and we also have to, you know, reevaluate what are our special needs and recommendations moving forward. You know, from time to time, populations change, needs change, they shift, you know, Donna can speak to that extensively, and we've done that over time, but we really have to take a look at what are those needs, what's in the pipeline, and how is it best gonna be able to plan for that? Other important changes, you know, as you know, the efforts continue to be successful to increase reimbursements for Medicaid. So, you know, I think we had 14% of Medicaid forms signed a few years ago, I think we're up to 96 point, 96 and change at this point, and that's the billing of services we provide students who receive state healthcare, and we're able to bill back. This year, the fund was raised at town meeting to 400,000 for the Medicaid fund. I'd like to bring it to town meeting in the spring, this spring, to go to a cap of $600,000. All of this money comes back to us, but we can only spend what we have in the account. And this is a fund that, working with the town manager and working with our staff to get the signatures and be reimbursed federally by the people we service in the schools, this is the fund that we'll only use in perpetuity for curriculum, professional development and/or coaching sessions. And it's, to be quite honest and frank... And it's, to be quite honest and frank, this is a game changer for North Andover. As assistant superintendent in this job, the first year we had just $55,000 in this and then we went to the 250 and this year the 4. That's the first money we had in almost a decade to really update and replace curriculum So we'll ask that. And we will continue to work with the town manager, the finance director on appropriate funding process.
Can I just say what that means? That means that it's not as easy as we thought that the money that comes in goes into an account and then we just spend from that account the money that comes in. There has to be an extra step taken at town meeting to appropriate those funds so that we can then use them.
Every year.
Every year.
It's not just the cap we voted on last time.
It's not the cap that is the issue. It's to make those funds available for the school department, there has to be an action taken at town meeting each year.
Okay.
Yep. And then Jim works to create the mechanism with Lynn Savage and Andrew Mailer. They do a really nice job and I'm glad they know how to make that work. So looking forward, the FY '20 proposed budget should reduce the number of classrooms above the school committee's recommended class size to 11.2%. As I started to talk about earlier, given the current number of classrooms in our schools, our goal remains 7.9, kind of seen as that effective zero because ultimately you have to take a look at, looking at all the numbers across a grade level, do we really get there? I mean, it was interesting, I was, you know, as a bit of a historian, and you guys know I've read all the school committee reports from 1856 to present, I also went back and read, I also went back and read the, over the break, the superintendent's executive summaries from 2011 on. I couldn't find any more in the drive after that. But what's really interesting is, you know, 2011, 2012, 2013, talking about classes over 30. You know, so to have the ability, I see someone in the background that had kids, probably in the district at the time when we added teachers in November because we had 36, 37 in a classroom. And another one here as well.
That's crazy.
You know, if we really wanted to get to zero, would have to really look at saying, you know, we're going to take your kids out of the Thompson District and put them here. And then the two classes in a school like the Kittredge, until we get the facilities master plan too, it becomes really just difficult. You know, so that's one component of it. I'm excited. The ability to close this out is one of the things in my entry findings is decreased class size was number one, stability and leadership was number two, and number three was a focus on special education. But, you know, one of the things you looked at and it said, well, teachers said, oh, I think it was 11%, wanted to decrease class size. Well, I think that's a result of, and talking to teachers after that, in elementary, we've been doing it and it's in the plan and they know what's happening. At the middle school, there's not any room for anybody. So I was really, I brought up the class size and they said, well, that's just a given. We're not even going to talk about it because there's not the space at this time to do it. And the high school, as you know, is undergoing the NIASC process, which is pretty extensive and that will have recommendations, accommodations, but also provide a blueprint for the future as we head, you know, up the road. So as you can see, this was a proposal, excuse me, this is the class size chart that we looked at and, you know, we proposed a couple of different components to it. This was the discussion on November 29th and it was a very, very good discussion. I think I indicated at the time, I was happy to put the 7.9% in. I was one who encouraged it, but we had some debate about that number with the understanding that I realized we weren't going to get to the 7.9 this year, but I thought it was a terrific aspirational goal to save the community. We want to get here, but it may take two cycles. And I think since I became superintendent, I wouldn't call it elect superintendent, appoint, before I took over and you guys hired me last December or January, I started to think about, you know, how we could do that because it's a lot to close that gap in one year. So I'm pretty excited that we're able to do that. We had a couple scenarios to look at. So, you know, two got us to 12, four got us to 10, you know, and this puts us at about 11%, 11.2 or so.
But we never had promised to do down to 7.9 by the end of this year.
I didn't anyway.
No, nobody did.
Yeah. It was just an aspirational goal for anyone who's at home watching or anyone that hasn't read the documents that are all on northandrepublicschools.com archived in the school committee section. Every presentation we've done for many years is there and it's chock full of very valuable information. So the next component, I'm going to ask Jim to review these different numbers.
So this is more detail and there's actually a lot more detail in the, in the budget books that you receive. It gives you the account description and line items for each account, but this kind of rolls it up. And just to highlight, as Gilly mentioned earlier, level services without that $120,000 in there is 2.99%. Traditionally, we're right around 3% for level services, leaving us the $370,800 for our proposed additions. And just, they're, what we normally see for percentage increases when you look at elementary, high school and middle school, when you factor in that most of that professional staff salaries that see both column and step increases, with elementary being a little low because that 120, that's where it came from, it would have been in that category and would have been about the same percentage increase if it was in there. Maintenance is a negative number because we have money in there for FY '19 for the new school that we won't need for the following year. That's why it's actually lower next year than it was this year. And special education, we are budgeting in there for our, what we know to be our out-of-district costs right now, as we've seen, that can always change. Technology is a traditional increase to usually around 2.5%. And then transportation, that's due to contractual increases. We'll be in the second year of a three-year contract at that point and that captures the increases. Looking at other districts, we're in good shape as far as our transportation costs, although at times it seems, it feels like it's expensive. We benefited our last contract from, from really low prices. We ended up having, because of the drivers unionizing and we had to increase, well, the bus company had to increase pay for the bus drivers, that's reflected in our, our new contract annual costs. And that's why we're seeing percentage increases there.
Is that regular education and special education true?
Everything.
Everything.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And then Gilly has already mentioned the items that are being proposed as additions, getting us to the $50,580,001.70 for an increase of 3.75%.
Did you make the same layout last year?
Mm-hmm. I think I left, I went from FY '16, I left it in as an extra year.
I don't remember. I love this because I think it's really clear for people to understand what level services means.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we spoke extensively at the last meeting about, you know, the special education program that was added, you know, and it was already in place for the start of the school year and how do we, how do we tackle that with the ability to look to the future of making it good for our kids, but also saving money and potentially bringing money back to the district by recruiting students back.
And for those who are interested, I'm always surprised that there are any people interested in this, but this and the detail behind it will be available online starting tomorrow.
So we go to a section next and if anyone's really interested, there's also an executive summary linked to the agenda that goes into much greater detail with some of the rationale and some of the different components. We'll certainly have questions, but we go to a section next called looking forward. And currently, our middle school has the largest class size in the district. And among our comparable districts through DART and the comparable ones selected by the school committee years ago dating back to Chuck Ormsby, we're 4.9%, we have 4.9 students higher than the state average. So to impact class size, you know, we need to add a team really to each grade level, 14 classroom teachers with the special education teachers and supports. You know that we've put in two applications to the MSBA, they've both been well received. Allison Jones from the MSBA has been in contact with me. I'm setting up a meeting with Jim, myself and Allison to discuss our recent one that did not make it into the queue this time because the application date opens tomorrow for this, you know, next round. But I think it's really important to note that we will continue to really apply, but you have to know that many districts and their projects are not accepted till the fourth or fifth year of applying to even get into the queue. And it can be sometimes a six, seven-year process. The other thing that I think it's really important for people to understand is every year is mutually exclusive. So, you know, the first time we applied, we had made it even to a higher round to get into the queue. But why it's mutually exclusive and I say that is it is all dependent on what the needs are for that specific year in terms of the application. So to give you an example, you know, I think the Leahy School in Lawrence just got accepted and they're going into the building. That's a place I think that was built right around 1900 and it's not uncommon for them to have like six inches of standing water in the basement. So there, every year it depends on what the need is for that specific year and it doesn't mean that it's a bad application or, you know, every time you apply, it could be your fourth, it has no bearing on the previous applications.
So it might take four, five, six years to get accepted, then you're in the queue and the queue lasts for another...
Could be five to seven years.
Five to seven years.
Yeah.
So if we're looking at expanding our middle school
Mm-hmm.
Through the MSBA process, we're looking at perhaps 10 to 12 years.
Possibly. You know, John F. Kennedy once said, when's a good time to plant a tree? It's today. You know, and I think two components to it is, one is, yes, we'll continue and apply. But two, I think it's also going to warrant serious discussion with the community about what are the other options that we look at? It doesn't mean that we'd be endorsing any of those options or saying this is what's best. I think we just need to know what it would look like. Many communities, as you'll see in my executive summary, I talk about, you know, the possibility, you have to look at what self-funding would look like, what would it look like if it was part of a facilities master plan? You know, and I've talked about this with Andrew. And it doesn't mean that I'd favor one over the other or even have an idea, it's just a matter of figuring out what's the reality of all the components to deal with the issue with the middle school.
To Helen's point, when should we start that conversation? Should we be...
When we plant that tree, today.
No, I mean, do we wait another year and then get rejected again and then start it? Or should be, I don't know, 10 to 12 years seems awfully long time to wait.
Yeah, I mean, it, it can take, you know, from start to finish, that five to seven years. I think that's something for future talk, this, we can talk about this spring.
Another question I would have is looking at the population that we might be serving in 10 years, will we be needing an expansion in 10 years? Or will the population, I think that the population in North Andover has been steady. I don't think we've had significant increase or decrease. We've done quite a bit of building, so I don't know how we would measure what our needs might be 10 years from now when we may have the opportunity to expand the middle school.
Well, I think two components to it is, one is we haven't seen a fluctuation overall, high or low. We do know we have extreme pressure points. A lot of babies born in a particular year and they're all in second grade or they're all in, you know, we've seen some big bubbles come through. But not only the overcrowding is a big component about this application, we had them come out, we had our contract, we had the company architects come out and take a look. You know, the science labs are inadequate there. You know, I met with Seth Moulton a couple of weeks ago. He says in 2040, most of the jobs we're preparing kids for, we don't even know what they're going to be yet. But we do know that a lot of that field is science, technology, engineering, math. And, you know, so the proposal, in the proposal, it's to really add that science lab, that component, to have those updated. And then it's really much easier for us to have the antiquated science labs. Now, we're still delivering all brand-new science curriculum, which we rolled out in the last few years. It's not optimal, but it's working for now. So when you read the application, sometimes people say, this sounds really bad. Well, you know, you want to make your best case, but it's not ideal. It's not the best place. It's not the best space. You know, I'd be happy to take any of you guys to see what those science labs, how many people have seen them over there? You know, it's really just another classroom with slate slabs from 1954 probably, some of those things haven't changed. There was a renovation, I believe, in 94 at the middle school, but it hasn't had much attention since. So the ability to, you know, convert those to traditional classrooms to open up the space there, but then the, you know, the two birds with one stone also get, you know, what we believe is critical for our kids in terms of a space in science. So.
I mean, it seems to me that we're opening up the discussion right now by discussing this, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, I mean, it, it's a bigger discussion, I think, than just here tonight, you know, this is a proposal. It's something to be aware of because it's something we want to look at. And if you look at the executive summary, we talk, I think I talk a little bit about, you know, what many towns do. You, you have to look at every option. Before you can even speculate on anything, the most important thing we can do is have factual information about what all the different avenues to pursue may look like.
Right.
And then what's involved in those avenues, who's involved? And then I think we have the ability to work with, on the town side, with municipality, just like we've done with all the other projects that have happened. I think collaboration on something like this is key with all the players. Okay. English learners. I'm proposing we, this year, so this is an area I'm pretty passionate about. As you know, we hired a new assistant superintendent of schools this year for teaching and learning, Lorraine Marks, and we were able to replace her position, the director of humanities in the district, Kristen Andrews, who's also an EL expert, who's a principal in the city of Lawrence and a state certified trainer. So we're pretty excited about what we're reviewing this spring about all the different things. But this has been in our plan for a while and we just haven't really been able to get to it in a substantial way because it's going to take money. We have done a couple of things that I think are pretty exciting. We raised the money significantly, three hours, three, $3 an hour for this year, it goes up to 34 and then 36 because they were at 2874 for the longest time and they have to be certified teachers. That tutor model has served us well for a lot of years, but I think it's time for us to come up with a multi-year plan so that we add 1.0 certified EL teachers to the budget each year until we have three in the district. The majority of the folks who receive services with the Thompson and the Atkinson, they do really well and they test out by middle school. And then our middle school typically could have anywhere between five and 11 and the high school, five and 13, 14. It all depends on typically move-ins. So the long-term solution is create a comprehensive EL program staffed by certified teachers. I'm going to ask Kristen and Lorraine to lead that charge. We have a lot of information on it, we've done a lot of studying and we also have a longtime person, as you know, who's really worked hard and done a wonderful job for us, is Marion Mako. She's a teacher. But at some point, Marion's indicated she does want to retire at some point. You know, I think that's going to be an opportunity to get this thing moving in a different direction as part of our strategic plan. The one thing I say, I put in here is because we've had it, can fund through our student exchange. If you remember, our student exchange program, I was hoping to have, oh boy, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 kids this year. I think we have one and a half for the year, one for half a year, where we're seeing these funds. And we still have money in the funds from the couple of kids we've had from China without any political commentary. For whatever particular reason, there's been a lot of issues around parents and visas to the United States from China and passports and visiting. You know, I'm not sure what plays into all of that, if there's issues with policy change or ICE, but it's been a real challenge and folks have not been sending it, you know, to our, our school district. And this is the place folks want to come because we're getting the best of the best and they want to come here for one year, get their degree and then do school here in America. And their chances of getting in from, with a degree from an American high school is better than the amount that applies from China to the colleges that they're interested, particularly locally, places like MIT, Harvard, Columbia.
So I recall that we were working with one specific program.
We still are.
Are the other programs, I know there's a number of different sending agencies from China, are they experiencing the same sorts of challenges? And how long are we tied in to work with that one specific organization? Is there... Is there any advantage to us to looking at other organizations that do the same kind of exchanges?
Yeah, um, that's a good question. Uh, we, we, we signed, I believe, an initial three-year contract, Jim.
Correct.
Um, and I think this might be our last year or next year coming up, maybe there's a one-year extension we brought.
That was back with Dr. Hutchinson, right?
No.
No. Since I've been here.
Dr. Hutchinson brought the proposals forward-
That's what I-
But then I believe we went-
For a share of chance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I believe that um, you know, this could be, we can check, I don't, I don't want to speculate off the top of my head, I don't.
That's fine, I just think that, again, when we're looking at all options, you know, if we're not having success and it's been-
It's a higher edge problem, too.
We might want to look at what the other-
Yeah, I can tell you this much, I've talked to superintendents from other communities that have had a very robust program. One particular was um on the Salt Shore and they went from like fifteen kids to now they have one this year, so. Um, and that, they use a different agency, so.
And, and I guess if that's the case, again, looking forward, you know, one year, two year, three years, is that our best funding mechanism or do we need to be looking at other possibilities?
You know, this was never intended to be the primary funding mechanism. This was a way in the short term to enhance what we have. I think back to the long-term plan, it's going to have to be a serious operating budget item and something we take seriously as an initiative with the changing demographic we have seen here in North Andover. Uh, leadership structures. So as you know, uh, we, we took a look, a hard look last time through IBB at the high school structures and we addressed those. Um, and we were going to make recommendations around um the middle school structure, but we said, hey, Dr. McQuade's retiring, why don't we wait for the new principal to come on board and we'll study and make recommendations for the K, uh, pre-K through eight, for elementary as well. So they have been meeting already, Jim heads the committee, they're doing a really nice job, uh, and they'll make recommendations going forward. I don't think it's as straightforward though as saying we're going to do all of this in one year, I think it has to be a tiered approach. And as we go back, a good example of that would be, um, so a good example of that would be, um, you know, the first step in this would be to be creating an, uh, you know, the Bradstreet Needs two point oh FTE, we're at one point eight. I have to say publicly that Dr. Judy Rogers has done an amazing job. She came in here and it was a one year, we only planned on it to be temporary for one year to have the co-principals. Um, she has served in a point eight capacity and I don't think in her wildest dreams she thought we may experience some of the challenges, you don't know what you don't know until you get in, so um I'm thrilled, things are up and running, everyone worked really hard and she's worked really hard and I'm really appreciative of the work that she has done. With that being said, um, we also have an outstanding other co-principal uh with Ms. Mary Lou Connors, um, and she's done a tremendous job this year. Um, obviously, Ms. Mary Lou's been with us for a long time, she'll continue to stay on, um, but Ms. Rogers will be stepping out, uh, she did this for a year to help us as she knows she's worked for us, part-time, really one day a week over the last several years helping coordinate with the kindergartens. But I think it's um, we really need in a school, which I have to look at the numbers, it may be our largest elementary school at five hundred and five students, three hundred and forty-three in the um kindergarten with the remainder at the uh preschool side. And I really want to get away from saying the kindergarten side and the preschool side because I, you know, what I'm envisioning, and I think I put it in here, um, or maybe in my executive summary, I'm envisioning a campus principal, um, you know, and, and current leaders can apply and be part of that process if that's, if they're interested in that. Or we will hire and have that campus principal lead the entire building and also have a full-time administrator who will be the associate principal second in charge, who also oversees all those pieces. Because it, you know, it's critical.
So just remind me, prior to this year, when we had the ECC, there wasn't a principal there, there was a coordinator there and the principal was from the Atkinson School? Or how did that-
No, that's a real, that, that's about six or seven years back, I think.
Good, remind me.
I think at some point, uh, Dr. Hutchinson, I would say, um, in two thousand and thirteen, made Mary Lou Connors the director of the Earl Childhood Center, which would, de facto, was the principal.
Uh-huh.
So, uh, at one point, Greg Landry was campus principal and there was a director. Um, obviously, you know, with Atkinson's population, only five students less than Franklin at this time, and adding that in, you know, it wasn't really a realistic model, I mean, no one was calling Mr. Landry about preschool issues, they were calling the expert, Ms. Mary Lou. So I'm pretty excited, um, you know, we will be meeting with staff uh very shortly to find out what their needs are, we'll, you know, we want to have their voices heard uh and then we'll be posting um for that full-time position. And I believe that, um, I believe this is a great place to work and I think we'll have tremendous candidates. So I'm pretty excited about it. And like I said, I really appreciate Judy's work. I mean, Lorraine, do you have anything you want to say about that before I click over?
I think Judy continues to do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work, trying to support all the staff there. I, I don't think it's any secret that it's been a challenging transition in many, many ways. You know, it was a, it was a big move for a lot of the teachers. I think the teachers have really pulled together and done a fabulous job. And I know from my perspective, just in terms of curriculum, um, Judy is really helping with the whole literacy piece, which is so important at that age. We are doing some running records trainings over there and we are including the pre-K teachers in those trainings so they understand that whole process, they understand the um early reading development. So it's really exciting and she really, Judy came to us to say, you know, I want to support this, this is something that's important for me to do in my tenure here this year. So um it's, it's exciting, really exciting. And I, I, and I know my team definitely appreciates your support. And I believe special ed does as well because that has a huge impact on kids moving forward in terms of their liter- literacy skills. And Don and I had a conversation about this recently as well, so.
Yeah, and, and Ms., you know, I don't know whether I should call her Ms. Connors, I've never heard anyone call her that. Have you? It's always been Ms. Mary Lou or Mary Lou. Um, she's been remarkable. I mean, you talk about someone, I try to order her out over the winter recess because she's there at five in the morning and I think she stays there till nine, nine-thirty at night. She communicates with parents almost every single night and um she was the one when, you know, different people on the town side retired, different people on the school side had left, she's the one who really was always there uh and invested her heart and soul to make things happen. So I'm excited that, obviously, she's going to be back with us full-time and then, you know, there'll be an open position and, you know, that's also an, an opportunity if she wants to apply to as well, so it's pretty exciting. And we're going to have a lot of great options, so. Um, all right, so looking forward, um, continuing collaboration with the town. So as you know, uh, we developed this Special Education Stabilization Fund a few years back, working with Andrew and the town side, um, and I think it's critical. I think a lot of the stuff we've done has become a model for most communities in the Commonwealth, like this, you know, we, I think we're one of the first to have the Sped Stabilization Fund. I think we're one of the first, well, not one of the first, but we're, we're one of the first few to really work on that Medicaid. You know, I think Waymouth and Walpole were really leaders in the state on that. The work we did with the town to be able to have that money for that one year until we could get up and running with the Free Full Day K uh was absolutely remarkable. Um, you know, I regret that my son was the last paying class, um, the year before we went to Free Full Day K. But the thing that's most impressive with the Free Full Day K, and I just want to compliment Andrew Mailer and Kevin Hutchinson on this, is, you know, for a lot of our folks, this put thirty-five hundred dollars back in their pocket for the year. And there's nothing more important than access to school for our kids. And it really gave us the opportunity for a lot of our kids to come full day. Um, you know, the first year, there was a couple that didn't want to do it, there were four or five that wanted to get out at one o'clock every day because they needed a nap. But by November, I think most of them were staying full-time. But uh, pretty exciting. Jim, can you talk a little bit about the utilities in the solar?
So another collaboration has been um working with town manager for utilities. In particular, um, he took water out of our budget, um, which was a substantial amount uh this past year uh that we didn't have to uh pay any longer. And uh the solar project is a project that uh was the installation of solar panels at Osgood Landing, um, that results in credits um that we get both town and school um as electric customers, uh, and we've been able to decrease our electric costs. And in addition, we are in discussions about transferring um the electricity um to a, maybe the facility's account or um outside of ours at least. Um, and we're just trying to figure out that process. In that case, it wouldn't be like the water where they just take it, um, we would have to transfer the funds as well. Uh, but what it does, if we do that, is take away the unknown of each year. Um, right now, we're in a, we're just, I think we're in the second year of um our contract for our, our rates. Um, but there's always the next contract and what are the rates going to be and uh could substantially impact any given budget year um as we're preparing the budget for the next year. Um, so that would be very helpful as well. That's what that bullet means.
Great, Jim, can you take the next two as well?
Sure.
The Bradstreet and the maintenance increase, the-
So, and Brad-
I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory, the Bradstreet.
Well, the and Bradstreet, the Earl Childhood Center uh wouldn't have happened without the help. Um, we, we got funding, uh, but that was for the building, um, didn't include any of the site work, uh, which the town um then contracted with Riley to, to make happen. And that was a substantial amount of money. Um, and like I said, the project, it wouldn't have been able to be done without that. And then the maintenance increase in the capital plan, uh, we work closely with Steve Foster, he represents both town and school interests and overseeing the buildings uh and grounds. Um, and he has a fund, we have a fund in our budget of usually around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for deferred maintenance and Steve has a, a, a fund in his account as well, um, and it's being increased by hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars uh for this year and the ongoing years, uh, for him to be able to help us with deferred maintenance as well. Uh, because mo-, as you would suspect, um, the preponderance of need, our school buildings, uh, they're the largest um in the district or in the town, um, so the need is greater there and uh so we'll have more funding available through his account as well.
And, you know, last goes that asterisk back to the three point seven five and the hundred and twenty that Andrew Mailer will be picking up for that uh social emotional learning program, therapeutic program. Um, and I think that's the one that Dr. Stray spoke to um in terms of, you know, the need um going forward. And it's just something that hasn't been, seen those savings yet.
Dr. Gillen, I think it's worth mentioning that on the, again, I mentioned this before, the school committee list serve that um a lot of us participate in, um, four out of these seven or eight bu- bullets come up on a regular basis. Town's trying to figure out, figure out how to handle special ed surprises, who's done a stabilization fund, they ask. They ask, how are people, how do people ever finance full-day kindergarten? All these things come up. And it's, um, we've tackled these already and I have a feeling that in the next couple of years, we're going to hear people say, how do you improve early childhood education? How do you have more preschool? And I think, I just think it's interesting that we're really doing a good job pursuing some of these things.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's a tremendous team here and they, and it's been pretty stable uh with the, the players that have been in central office and most of our principals. And we have some really great new principals, but that crea-, I mean, we can't just say we've always done it this way.
No.
We need to be creative, we need to use our networks, um, you know, we need to connect with other places that do it. And then this spring, the most exciting thing we're doing this spring is we're, you know, it, it, we're reviewing everything, we're taking a look at everything. Is there a better way to do things? Um, is there a more efficient way to do things? Are there things that are better for kids to do? And that review's going to be remarkable because that's how we've gotten to some of these places. Um, and I've seen it with, you know, being the fourth superintendent in nine and a half years, I've seen it, you know, different things brought in by different folks. Um, and I think we're the place where we have a strong team with trust and the ability to talk as a whole district about what that looks like while being fiscally responsible. So, um, so I'm not used to clicking, Jim. You're usually the clicker. Uh, as you saw on the strategic plan, you know, we, we put the positions in where um, you know, the proposed increases are where they align in the strategic plan. Uh, for those who haven't seen the strategic plan at home, uh, you know, you can click on it on today's agenda or North Andover Public Schools. What's really cool about it is the one we have right now, is we show phase one, phase two, phase, all the different things we've completed, um, and will continue to do so. Um, and then really looking forward. So, you know, looking forward, we've seen positive initiatives from our focus on a strategic plan that was thoughtful, organized, and strategic. Um, and while the entry plan feedback recognizes this, it also highlights the needs for adjustments that need to be made to the strategic plan. The FY twenty budget will serve as a transition year to accommodate the needed adjustments. The one-year plan continues to address the initiatives and objectives of the current strategic plan, but will also be bringing forward a multi-year plan that allows us to address the initiatives and objectives needed to meet the needs of all students so that we can continue this trajectory of moving our kids in North Andover ahead and preparing them for the workforce, for technical school, for college, for career, and um it's pretty exciting. It's, you know, it's tremendous that we're going to have the ability to work with such talented people this spring to say, okay, we're closing the chapter on phase three and we're moving forward um with a lot of those components still in place but updated, such as the student services plan, the five-year curriculum plan. I don't even imagine the objectives necessarily changing, but the initiatives within themselves may do that. And this year serves as that transition year. And I think to be thoughtful, fiscally responsible, and do what's best for our teachers' kids because we can't do it all at once, we have to continue to stage in multi-year plans. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Quick question on your ca-, on the calendar at the end. Uh, we just said we're going back to the January seventeenth meeting, so that means that the public hearing won't be the twenty-fourth, will it?
Do we have the calendar, Jim?
Because right now, we don't have a meeting on the twenty-fourth, I don't think, do we? Or, I thought it was-
Is it in the budget book on the back?
Yes, I'm looking at, but I, it says it here, but I don't know that that's accurate.
We changed some dates, so what are the dates that we changed them to? Um, I don't have my book right in front of me.
So we, the seventeenth was in place, but it was a holder and we just confirmed tonight that Holly said we're going to stick with that.
Okay.
I even looked at the Google docs because of the updated ones.
All right.
I was just assuming it's going to stay.
Right, the twenty-fourth, um, I, I don't, we don't have a meeting scheduled currently and that's set here as the public hearing, so I just think we need to clarify that, that's all.
So what's your pleasure as a board?
Well, there's a certain number of days that, right, didn't Bev say she needs X number of days to-
Uh, yeah, for a public hearing, I believe it's seven.
Yep.
Well, prior to, until the next meeting to vote.
Right.
You have to have a public hearing and then you have to wait seven days.
Right. But how much, how much time does she need to post that there's going to be a public hearing?
Oh.
That's what I thought she said in the message.
Right, and that might be two weeks, or ten days, I think it might be ten days, but we'd have to check that.
So we're within, we're within, we're within that time, yeah. And I just wanted to call attention to that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So you want to hold the public hearing on the twenty-fourth?
I don't care when you hold it, I just, we just have to make it accurate.
Let's wait for if we're not scheduled to meet.
Currently.
We're scheduled to meet on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Right, you could do it on the seventeenth as well.
Yeah, and I think that was, that was the, that's how, that's what we planned.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nice job.
Yeah.
There's a little something for everybody in that plan.
Well, I mean, this, you know, the, we've had such an elementary focus and that was obviously the greatest need, you know, and the challenges we now face, you know, we'll continue to need to work with the elementaries, of course, um, but we'll need to continue to tackle those other challenges. I'm pretty excited about, you know, opening a discussion about the middle school to discuss that, but more importantly, it's pretty exciting that NIASC um really provides a blueprint about some of the high school needs in and of themselves. And, um, you know, we'll be making recommendations there as well going forward, so.
You were, you were saying earlier, um, as far as, you know, a school like Kittredge that only has um two classes, I believe it's the practice that if a parent were to request that their student go to another school to be in a smaller classroom, that we accept that, is that correct?
It absolutely does and we probably have over seventy-five students taking advantage of that at this time.
So, I mean, I just think that's important to note when we're talking about class sizes. And I also thought it was important and interesting to note that when we're looking at class sizes, that's not part of our policies. That's all been in budget directives as far as I can find in the last, you know, 10 years or so, that, that those numbers have come out of budget directives rather than our policy.
Yeah, I can't speak to what your specific policies, that's one thing that I do not read for fun, these policies from years past.
Well, I would give credit to Betsy Varey that helped me, you know, to look through and, and figure out where the, where these numbers came from and why.
I've seen them in a handbook now and then, but I think it probably came from a directive.
It's from these budget directives, I think, is what you're saying, Helen, right?
And when we're talking about level funding, we spent a lot of time a year or two ago talking about like math coaches and all that stuff. All that's still included, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
No questions? All right, we have no new business tonight. Jim, David said you might have a school building committee update.
I can give you one. So, we're at that stage now. We still have $35,000 in retainerage, which is plenty for what's left. There are things that present themselves, whether you want to call them growing pains or, you know, the building settling in. And Triumph have been very good about coming in and addressing those if we've brought them to our attention. We've brought them, it to their attention. If you've been there recently, you probably couldn't miss the canopy that was installed. They've been battling the elements, though, and trying to get it painted. It's going to be painted the same color as the trim for the rest of the building. And they're continuing to try to do that, which is a tough time of year to be trying to do something like that. If they have to, they will pull the plug and, and come back in the spring when the weather breaks again and do it then. If you've been there recently, you may have also noticed that the structures, the sewer structures in the parking lot that you couldn't miss because they were a couple inches high, higher than the ground, have been lowered.
Oh, good.
That, that has happened. So, that if, and when we do get snow, our plows will be able to remove the snow without doing any damage to themselves. What else? The Atkinson Playground on that site is completed and in use and is a big hit. And I think that's about it. They had the last meeting, oh, the second-to-last meeting of the school building committee. The last remaining item will be, once we hit spring and they've completed everything, we'll release whatever's left in retainerage.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment?
Jim Goldman, 28, Jared Place, three things, just adding one. For next meeting or when appropriate, it would be great to hear these three items. One, who is on the building committee and what are their responsibilities? Two, how much costing and discussion and build-out options around NAMs has been completed so far? Am I going slow enough? Okay. And three, education or understanding on why the first, I didn't miss that comment, multi-year financial plan will be shared in June and not sooner. I think I might understand why, but I think it would be nice to hear more on that. And if the multi-year plan that you mentioned for June will include operating costs, capital improvements, or both?
It's not a financial plan, it's a strategic plan.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Got it.
Those plans include curriculum rollouts, they include student services, they include all the initiatives that we put out year after year as the priorities that we have to discuss then during each budget season.
Okay.
But there's not a particular way to necessarily forecast some of the components, just particularly around special education, circuit break of funding.
Yep.
Out-of-district move-ins. You know, for example, this year, we haven't had one kid leave our district.
Right.
That started in September.
That's kind of a big accomplishment, but.
But Dr. Straight, you know, how many, what's the cost associated with the move-ins from the outside at this point?
So, the increased out-of-district costs that we've had out of our control is about $400,000.
Right, but there is a soft number. I don't know how you might call it, Jim, technically, but there's a soft win in those that could have moved out of district but didn't.
In the past, we called it cost avoidance.
Cost avoidance.
Yeah.
Right, okay, correct, yeah. All right, but that's good to know. I missed that. It's not financial, it's strategic, thank you.
Right, and, and it's tied very closely to the financial.
Without question.
But it's, it's got to be really thoughtful because it involves professional development as well as curriculum selection.
Yeah.
It involves a whole host.
Okay.
It's actually pretty complex.
It has to be. Thank you for that. So, there's only two questions.
Okay.
Actually, one of which the school building committee people are listed on the website as to their roles, that would have to be answered, but.
Okay, I thought only Dave was.
All of them are listed.
They're all now? Okay, my apologies.
No worries.
And there may be one that resigned that's still listed.
Correct.
Okay.
But what they do, that's part of your question, it's not listed there, no.
It's not, okay.
Yeah, we'll get that for the next meeting. I know we'll probably pull that together in a few minutes tomorrow.
Sure.
Or Bev.
Next meeting's fine, Jim.
Well, I could tell you right now. I mean, basically, their function is to manage any construction projects of, of school-related projects, to oversee the general contractor, the project manager, and the budget of that project.
Okay, so, big project, obviously, the Ann Brett, that falls under them.
Correct.
But also, like pothole raising, all of that.
Not that, no.
Okay.
It has to be a larger building project.
Got it.
Yep.
Any other public comments?
Mr. Widdon, anything to say about the ECC and your lunch duties tonight?
Give him a break.
A little bit more hectic than usual, but it's a good time.
Okay. So, those five-year-olds have fallen back into old patterns.
Yeah.
Okay.
They were a little bit more mellow after break and now they're kind of getting back to its main things.